I'd like to call this meeting to order. Invitation by Ms. Valerie Bujwa, District Seventeen, District Seven, and Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Al Archer.
Thank you.
Ms. Ballard?
Can't hear her.
No.
She can't, no.
Would you like me to say it?
Yeah, that would be good with Tyler. If you can go ahead.
Loving and merciful God, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance as we conduct the business of our school district. We pray for discernment to make decisions that will ensure the safety of all employees and students when preparing for the new school year. Let us lead with integrity and let us always put the needs of others ahead of our own. Protect our students and bless our remarkable leaders and employees for their extraordinary leadership during these challenging times. We ask all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. For the pledge?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Roll call. Everybody.
Ms. Babin's here. Ms. Huddleston?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Fertitta?
Dean, you still got them all muted.
Dr. Bro?
Here.
Dr. Bro is here. Dr. Guyot?
Here.
Ms. Valerie Bujwa is here. Ms. Bujwa, can you hear us? Mr. Dufresne?
I can hear you.
Mr. Schwes?
Here.
Mr. Plazos?
Here.
Mr. Deplanis? Mr. Deplanis had mentioned he might not be able to make it. Mr. LaFaut?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
And Mr. Adams.
Come on, here. He's muted.
Mr. Adams is here.
We have a quorum. E, public participation. Public comments will be accepted during the livestream of the meeting. To submit a comment, please give us the comment. Please use the comment feature on the LaFouche Parish School District Facebook page. Comments will be read aloud if it pertains to a particular agenda item. Two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held June 3, 2020. C, superintendent's quarterly report for the period of April 2020 through June of 2020. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Mr. Harold Adams, motions. Mr. Randy Schwes, seconds. All in favor? We're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Babin?
Yes.
Ms. Huddleston?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Fertitta? Ms. Fertitta? Dr. Bro?
Yes.
Ms. Fertitta said yes. Dr. Bro?
Yes.
Dr. Guyot?
Yes.
Ms. Bujwa?
Yes.
Mr. Dufresne?
Here.
Mr. Schwes?
Yes.
Mr. Plazos?
Yes.
Mr. Deplanis? Mr. Deplanis is not here, I'm sorry. Mr. LaFaut?
Here, yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Vote passage unanimously. Three, new business. A, to consider postponing the have-sent sales tax proposition scheduled for the August election and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Marion Fertitta, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. Hello, Ms. Vow. Is there?
Hey, sorry.
Are there any comments? I guess from the board? And we'll do a bar raise of hands and I'll call on you as such. Ms. Marion Fertitta?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I think at this time it is best if we postpone this. I'm sure that the teachers will understand and I know that the businesses that support, that all of the businesses will definitely be in favor of this. So that's why I definitely would like to see us postpone it. Hopefully, maybe the economy will get back, they'll get back to normal and maybe even better and we'll go back to the drawing board then.
Thank you, Ms. Fertitta. Mr. Plazos?
Thank you, Madam President. I think just the landscape has changed so much in the last three months. It's only the right move to make, just to postpone it to a later date and that way we can move forward when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Ms. Babin?
Um, I just want to make sure to reiterate the fact that we do want this to happen and we do want to be able to offer this for our employees. It's very important. It's just fiscally not the right response. We wouldn't be acting very responsible right now if we went and asked for this. So it's not, it's just a put on hold. It's definitely a goal of ours to make sure we try to get this passed.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. Mr. LaFaut?
I just want everybody to understand and I think the public can understand that we're not canceling it. We're just asking for a postponement till times are a little bit better.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. LaFaut. Any other? Ms. Bujwa?
Yes, I kind of want to reiterate that, that we know that our teachers definitely deserve it and so does the public. But we also want to be fiscally responsible to our constituents and just wait till the economy picks back up. But teachers, we do want this for you.
Thank you, Ms. Bujwa. Ms. Fertitta, you have a?
I have a question for the superintendent. Will we have to go back and request this to be put back on the ballot or can we just postpone it automatically when we're ready to use it, to do it?
Thank you, Ms. Fertitta. I actually have Jason Akers on the call tonight, but I believe that I can answer that you have to make announcements in advance for any election that we want to have an item on that ballot. And so we have already missed the deadline to be in the November election because it's a presidential election. However, there's a special election in December and we would have to make the notifications that we intend to have an item on the December ballot by the first week in September. And so, yes, we would have to go forward, but we can use the exact same language or protocol that we've already set up with Foley and Udell to simply, when the time is right, look at those deadlines and when those elections occur. And as long as we meet those gates set by the Secretary of State's office, we'd be okay. But if anything I said is incorrect, I've got Jason on the phone, so hopefully he can chime in.
Thank you.
Hi, Jason Akers here. I completely agree with the superintendent. We would have to start the process all over. But just to give you the information for what is upcoming, there is an election date, as you mentioned, on December 5 of this year and then next year, March 20 and April 24 are the two spring election dates.
But we could use the same language, correct, Mr. Akers?
The only change that you would have to make is change the effective date. It initially said July 1 of 2020. Obviously, that's not going to happen. So other than changing the effective date, the rest of the language would work.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the question, Ms. Fertitta. Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Dufresne?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the words of my fellow colleagues and say that this is not to cancel the tax proposal for an election, it's just to postpone it. And we know that our teachers and all of our employees really deserve this. They work extremely hard each and every day, giving our kids the best education possible. So we definitely know that they need to be rewarded. But until that can happen, I want to just make sure that they all know that we are here to support them through any and all obstacles that may come their way. We want to help and be their voice. So if they have any questions at any time, please reach out to us and we're more than happy to listen and to help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dufresne. Any other comments? None. We did have a question. It said, in regards to the election in August, will the district have to pay additional fees when reconsidering to put it on the ballot? Mr. Akers, could you address that?
Sure. To my knowledge, you only have incurred fees for publication so far, which I think are pretty de minimis. And so that would be the only duplication that you would have. Just as a reminder, our firm doesn't charge legal fees for elections. We handle that at just your out-of-pocket expenses.
Thank you very much, Ms. Akers. And I know the board thanks you as well, as I'm sure, as Ms. Fertitta said, in these fiscal times, it is important to, and Ms. Vow, I guess all of them have echoed to monitor and be aware of that. Anybody else have any other comments? We had a first and a second, so we'll go ahead and vote. Roll call vote?
Ms. Babin?
Yes.
Ms. Huddleston?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Fertitta?
Yes.
Dr. Bro?
Yes.
Dr. Guyot?
Yes.
Ms. Bujwa?
Yes.
Mr. Dufresne?
Yes.
Mr. Schwes?
Yes.
Mr. Plazos?
Yes.
Mr. LaFaut?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous. B, to receive a report from the superintendent on the current operations within the LaFouche Parish School District. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam President. The first two items that I'd like to update the board are relative to policy revisions, specifically policy AFC closure of schools. The changes to this policy are going to allow for the accommodations relative to a pandemic and not just a hurricane or the simple terms of explaining what needed to change in our policy. Our policy had previously, for the emergency closing of schools, assumed that there was a mandatory evacuation order and did not take into account the specific challenges relative to a stay-at-home order. And so Mr. Romany's office and in conjunction with my office and Human Resources has worked to make those changes to AFC. It is available in board docs if you would like to review it. And we are recommending that we adopt these policies. And so on the board's behalf, the board president and I will be adopting the amended version of AFC, Emergency Closure of Schools, so that the practices that we put in place immediately following the governor's closing of schools relative to paying our non-exempt employees and who has to come in, the treatment of essential staff, it's different for a pandemic than a hurricane. And so we took those differences into account and amended the policy as such. The other policy that needs to be amended is policy GBRIBA, Family and Medical Leave. The federal government has passed some legislation that gives additional protections and leave to employees that may be themselves affected by COVID-19 or have family members and dependents that were affected by COVID-19 or frankly, if they're the primary caregiver or someone in their home is affected by COVID. And so there are all of these different classifications that an employee can qualify for. And so the amendment to policy GBRIBA simply states that we will comply with the federal guidelines as it relates to the coronavirus and the leave associated with it. And the details surrounding this COVID response actually ends December 31 of 2020. And so for this policy to survive, January 1 of 2021, the federal government would actually have to provide additional legislation. We also have the bond refunding, which is the second reason why I've invited Mr. Jason Akers to join our Zoom call. And what we are going to be doing on the board's behalf is a refunding of our existing bond. And what this means in terms that everyone can understand is that we've sold bonds at a given interest rate and the market conditions right now are favorable to refund those bonds. Ostensibly, we're refinancing our existing debt and the result is going to be potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings to the LaFouche Parish taxpayers and LaFouche Parish School Board. And so if no one has any objections to this idea, the board president and I will continue on a path to allow the board the ability to refund these bonds. Additional updates, we have HR currently has 13 vacancies posted online. Anybody interested in coming to LaFouche Parish and joining our team can see those vacancies. And we have, in addition to the 13 teacher vacancies, various positions throughout our school district that are again, are all available online. The HR department has been working around the clock to fill those vacancies and doing a very good job of getting certified teachers onto our books. Federal programs has been very busy with all of these various funding sources that have been coming to us from the federal government. They've been filtered to us through title money. And so they have been working very hard to both budget the formula CARESAC money, which we received in a block grant in the amount of $3.8 million, and also the incentive money, which we received in the amount of $529,000. And again, all of this money is going to fund the Chromebooks, the MiFi's, the hand sanitizer, the cleaning supplies, the disinfectants, the myriad of things that we're identifying that our schools are going to need in order to meet the guidelines and expectations that the Louisiana Department of Education, along with the CDC and the governor's office, has issued for us. From a curriculum update, the magnet program has been put in a position due to the COVID response and the Nickel State University need to have all of their square footage available to them. The program is going to be moving right now back to CM Washington, but the program will remain intact and all of the curriculum and instructional practices that we put in for those children will remain. And we're currently crafting a plan to get all the technology from Nickel State University pulled out and we're going to have those classes set up at CM Washington and ready to receive those children. The pupil progression plan and the code of conduct is finalized and ready for approval. We're going to send that out to you so that you can look at it before approval, but they were not major changes to either of those documents in this year. The business department continues to work hard. We have many bids that are going to be due back July 8. These are bids for items such as the hand sanitizer and all these thousands and thousands of dollars in products that we're going to be bringing on. And so we're very hopeful that we get very competitive bids to maximize the cleaning supplies and our ability to provide them to schools. We also have RFPs for matte dust mops due back July 8. We will be revisiting and advertising surplus trucks and an RFP for a web hosting replacement is going to be done as well. Many of you know we use an e-chalk platform currently. We have six months on the e-chalk left, but I have directed the IT department to submit an RFP so that other web designers and platforms can be looked at for approval. And so if we do go in a different direction, it would be after the December contract with e-chalk ends this year. Maintenance, as have been briefing for a while, we've been talking about the LaRose screw finally started to come down today. I know that Mr. Plazos was there as we had an excavator taking walls of it off today. This is a step in the right direction, step toward progress to remediate and update that school. And I think we're getting a very good deal on it. I know that Mr. Plazos has worked hard to get this thing done and I'm sure Mr. Ray is happy that it's finally happening. Great. Central LaFouche Sewer Plant continues and it is going on as scheduled. I will tell you that the safety tax renovations at South LaFouche and Central LaFouche are becoming a concern for me. The COVID-19 impacts those contractors in a great way. And so they're struggling to get the materials in and that is delaying the completion of these projects. So it is altogether possible that not only am I going to give Central LaFouche High School and South LaFouche High School a new way of doing school, but they're going to have to do it with an ongoing construction project at the front door. So we're very mindful of that and we're applying as much pressure to the contractor to get this done as possible, but there's some things that are simply out of his control as it relates to delivery of goods. Anybody who's ordered things over the internet over the last few weeks probably understands his plight. That's about it for land and facilities. From a technology standpoint, we are receiving the Chromebooks right now. We expect to have all of the Chromebooks in our hands in the next few weeks. The vendor had initially said that we weren't going to get them until the first week of August, which was creating a great deal of apprehension, but we're actually starting to receive them now and we will be putting in our order from MiFi's as soon as we have a clear understanding of exactly how many we need. But the MiFi producers and suppliers are assuring us that we can get those as soon as 48 hours upon request. Lastly, I will say that food services has been working extremely hard, both to develop the plan for next year and close out our June feeding operations. We'll serve this summer with 7,530. And like I said, they are planning to meet all of the challenges of the 2021 school year and I can't commend Ms. Fletcher and her team enough because they've done a phenomenal job. And with that, it's a good segue into what was published this morning, which is our return-to-work plan. That plan was made available to all of you yesterday and it was made public this morning. And I think the important thing about this plan is that it allows the conditions in our community to dictate the type of school that we're able to offer our community. We're all dedicated to providing a top-tier education to all of our children, to getting them on campus every day if possible. But everybody's concern, I believe, is the safety of our students and our employees and that has to be paramount. And so I think we have a good plan. It's able to transition from every student, every day, to a complete virtual should we be required. And each of those given scenarios presents its own challenges, but I feel like we've addressed at the district so that schools can begin their plan and how they're going to tackle this. And so with that, I thank you. But before I finish talking, I want to say that the LaFouche Parish School District supervisory staff and principals that had a hand in creating this plan did a phenomenal job. They stepped up and each of their departments was instrumental in putting this master plan together. And so I wanted to thank them on your behalf because I know how much you appreciate the work that they did to prepare that document and to give our community enough time to respond to the plan that we presented. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We're going to ask that any questions in regards to the return-to-school plan be addressed through the link that will be provided in a few days to answer your questions. These will be answered by central office staff. So the link will be up and running in the next few days. And if not, you can go ahead and email the school board office if it's pressing enough to that you feel you need it answered and somebody will respond. So based on it's not an agenda item this evening, we will take all questions and any questions that the public has and you can, a link will be provided in the next few days and/or you can go ahead and email the school board office. Next, four memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Eldridge Dorosha, retired teacher. Mr. Dennis Guyot?
Ms. Eldridge Dorosha was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District in August of 1949 as a teacher at Bayou Boff Elementary School. On August 30 of 1965, Ms. Dorosha left the system. She then returned as a part-time teacher at Chet Bay Elementary School. Ms. Dorosha also worked as a full-time teacher at Chet Bay Elementary during her service. Ms. Dorosha retired on June 1 of 1978, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 16 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. So move.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guyot. B, Mr. Robert Gro, retired teacher. Mr. Dufresne?
Mr. Robert Gro was hired as a teacher at Central LaFouche High School on January 18, 1980. Mr. Gro retired on June 2, 1995, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 15 and a half years of service. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. So move.
And Mr. Dufresne? C, Mr. Terry Perez, Sr., retired head janitor. Mr. Ray Bernard? Mr. Ray, we need to unmute you.
Okay, here we go again. Mr. Terry Perez, Sr., was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on March 7, 1988 as a yardman for the Golden Meadow Schools and Galley Elementary Schools. On July 1, 1991, Mr. Perez was promoted to head janitor at Cut Off Elementary School. Mr. Perez retired in December 31, 2003, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 14 and a half years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. E? Excuse me. D, Ms. Marion Dennis, retired teacher. Ms. Tina Babin?
Ms. Marion Dennis was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District in August of 1941 as a teacher at Golden Meadow Junior High School. Ms. Dennis also taught at Chet Bay Elementary School, Tibbetto Elementary School, Tibbetto Lower Elementary School, Tibbetto Upper Elementary School and WS LaFaugue Elementary School. Ms. Dennis retired on June 1, 1973, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 32 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. E, Mr. Claston Salsa, retired principal. Mr. Al Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Claston Salsa was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September 2, 1947 as a teacher at LaRose High School. He also taught at LaRose Cut Off High and Upper Elementary School. Mr. Salsa was promoted to principal at LaRose Elementary School on July 1, 1960. Mr. Salsa retired on July 1, 1979, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 32 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Yes, ma'am.
Ash Smith Rose Avery, retired teacher. Ms. Cheryl Thomas?
Okay. Ms. Rose Avery was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 28, 1967 as a teacher at CM Washington School. She also taught at Chet Bay Elementary School. Ms. Avery retired on May 23, 2000, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 33 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. G, Mr. Chester Mear, retired school bus driver, Ms. Tina Bavin.
Mr. Chester Mear was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on March third, nineteen sixty-five, as a school bus driver. Mr. Mear retired on June second, nineteen eighty-eight, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-three years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Bavin. H, Ms. Gloria Joseph, retired teacher, retired child nutrition technician, Ms. Valerie Boujwa.
Ms. Gloria Joseph was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-third, nineteen eighty-four as a child nutrition technician. Ms. Joseph retired on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and four, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boujwa. Hazel Falk, retired school teacher. Ms. Hazel Falk was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-nine as a teacher at LaRose High School. She also taught at LaRose Elementary School. Ms. Falk retired on February first, nineteen seventy-seven, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-eight years. Ms. Hazel Falk was my grandmother and a very special educator, had five children of her own. So thank y'all for letting me read this myself. Very much appreciated. I move that this resolution be adopted and general consent, by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. J, Ms. Edwina Sawal, retired school teacher, Mr. Henry Lafon.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Edwina Sawal was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on June thirteenth, nineteen seventy-three as a school janitor at LaRose Elementary School. She also worked at LaRose Middle School. Ms. Sawal retired on June thirty, nineteen eighty-eight, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of fifteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Ms. Lafon. Ms. May Doucet, retired head janitor, Mr. Harold Adams. Mr. Harold. Is he muted?
It looks like Mr. Adams is transmission stopped.
Okay. Mr. Martin, you want to go ahead and read that one?
He's back.
Mr. Adams. It looks like he's
Ms. May Doucet was LaFouche Parish School District on June thirteenth, nineteen seventy-three as school janitor at Galley Elementary. On June first, nineteen eighty on June first, nineteen eighty-five, Ms. Doucet was promoted to head janitor at Galley Elementary School. Ms. Doucet retired on June nineteen eighty-eight, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of fifteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent. I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. I'm going to go ahead and read it over again just so the, the family can hear and
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. May Doucet.
Ms. Doucet was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on June thirteenth, nineteen seventy-three as a school janitor at Galley Elementary. On June first, nineteen eighty-five, Ms. Doucet was promoted to head janitor at Galley Elementary School. Ms. Doucet retired on June thirty, nineteen eighty-eight, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of fifteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. That was much clearer. L, Mr. Easton Pete, retired superintendent, Mr. Ravenor. Mr. Ray. Is Ray frozen as well? Looks like he's
It appears that he's also having trouble with transmission.
Mr. Martin, you want to go ahead and read that one?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Easton Petrie was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty, nineteen fifty-four as a teacher at Golden Meadow High School.
Can you hear me?
Madam President.
Was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty four. Yes.
Mr. Ray.
President. I would really like to this to let, let you
Dean, do you think you can mute him so Mr. Martin could read it?
No, no.
Okay, Mr. Benor is muted at this point. The transmission was way too low.
That much is on.
It, it, it looks like he may be
You still can hear me?
It's, it's broken up. Your transmission is very low right now. You're coming across very staticky.
Can you hear me?
No, Mr. Ray. No. Mr. Martin is going to go ahead and read it, Mr. Martin.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Easton Petrie was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twentieth, nineteen fifty-four as a teacher at Golden Meadow High School. Mr. Petrie left the system on August thirtieth, nineteen sixty-five. On July one, nineteen sixty-six, Mr. Petrie was hired again as assistant principal at South LaFouche High School. Mr. Petrie was promoted on July first, nineteen seventy-seven as supervisor of instruction and transportation. On April seven, nineteen eighty-three, Mr. Petrie was placed as supervisor of finances, data processing, and secondary instruction. Mr. Easton Petrie was promoted again as superintendent of schools on July one, nineteen eighty-five. Mr. Petrie retired on June twenty-nine, nineteen eighty-eight, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-three years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Madam President, Madam President. If I may, for a second, I knew that Mr. Benor, Mr. Adams, Mr. Archer all worked with Mr. Petrie. In fact, he was my vice principal at South LaFouche High School. He was very well-known in our community. He, he worked for the church, he worked for the schools, he worked for a lot of people. He was well-loved and well-respected. And he was, he's a lost star to our community.
Yes.
Madam President, can you hear me now? Madam President.
I can hear, but still staticky.
Because I'd, I'd like to make some comments, but I'll have to do it when my voice can come back, okay?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment, please, if I may.
Sure.
Yes. In addition to being a great superintendent as well as a friend, Mr. Pete also attended Man Reese for many years. I also had the pleasure to attend with him, Men's Retreat. He was a very great mentor and we were missing greatly when we go to Man Reese as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't know where, huh?
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of working, I was a classroom teacher when Mr. Pete was the superintendent and he got us through some very tough times. That was probably the, the first of, of where our budget was just, it was, it was just, nothing was there. And Mr. Pete worked, came to each school and he asked the teachers what we could do to, to help him to get the budget straight. He did a fantastic job, got us through it. And I, I had, I just always have admired him and respected him. A, a great man and a gentleman.
Thank you, Ms. Tita.
Madam President, can you hear me better now?
Yeah. No, it's a little better, Mr. Benor. Yeah.
All right, can I make comments? And I, I don't want to make them if you can't hear me.
You can. Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. A lot of times you have a superhero in the job that you work at and Mr. Petrie is my, my superhero. I was able to work through him, with him through the eighties. He's the type of gentleman, can you hear me? Or am I just, you can't hear me? No?
Are you?
All right. All right, if you can hear me, just, just basically, I want to echo what everybody else has said. But, but in addition to that, he's an icon, not only in the educational field, but also in his community. And it was a, he will not be replaced. You just thank goodness that you had the opportunity to meet him and to work for him. And we hope that his wife is doing well. I know she's ill at this particular point. And we wish the best for his son Jed and his wife Robyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benor. Any other comments? Okay. M, Mr. Major Calvin Cooper, Director of JRTC. Major Calvin Cooper was hired on July second, twenty twelve as a JRTC instructor at Tibeto High School. Major Cooper also served as a JRTC instructor at Central LaFouche High School. On July seventh, two thousand and fifteen, Major Cooper was promoted to Director of JRTC. Major Cooper passed away on April twelfth, excuse me, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of eight years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. N, Ms. Aldi, Aldide Avera, paraprofessional, Mr. Al Archer.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Adelaide Avera was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September third, two thousand and two as a paraprofessional at Cut Off Elementary School. She also served as a paraprofessional at Golden Meadow Lower Elementary School. Ms. Avera passed away on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of eighteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by special, general consent and a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book. In addition, Madam President, I'd like to make a few comments, please, as well. It's okay.
Yes, sir.
I've known Ms. Avera for a long time. She was a wonderful person, wonderful paraprofessional, and she worked very well with her faculty as well as the kids. She's going to be greatly missed. She were a daughter of wonderful parents, Mr. and Mrs. Bust Avera. And they're great people, so we're going to miss Ms. Avera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Um. Oh, Ms. Madeline Chasson, retired child nutrition technician, Dr. Mary Bro.
Ms. Madeline Chasson was hired on April first, nineteen seventy-nine as a child nutrition technician at Chag Bay Elementary School. She retired. Ms. Chasson retired on April twenty-second, nineteen ninety-seven, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of eighteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Dr. Bro. Ms. Nita Surpass, retired teacher, Mr. Henry Lafon.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nita Surpass was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-first, nineteen forty-four as a teacher at Tibeto Elementary School. She also taught at Tibeto Junior High School, Golden Meadow High School and Up Elementary, and South LaFouche High School. Ms. Surpass retired on June third, nineteen seventy-seven, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-three years. And if I might add, Madam President, I knew Ms. Surpass not only as a teacher, but her husband Maurice and their two daughters, Anne Maurice and Martha, were all in the neighborhood in which I grew up in, in Golden Meadow. Ms. Surpass is quite a woman and she will be dearly missed. Thank you. And I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Mr. Lafon.
Well.
I, I just want to say that Ms. Surpass and Ms. Dennis were sisters and they are sisters to Dr. Ken Jimmy, who was at Nichols for many years. I don't know if everybody knew that.
Thank you, Ms. Fatida. Anybody else have comments? Thank you.
I see Mr. Harold, Harold.
Mr. Harold, you have your hand up?
Still can't hear us.
Mr. Harold.
Can you hear me now? Oh, sorry, Harold. Yeah. So for
Can't hear you, Mr. Harold.
Period, Harold. Then at this all the people that have stirred the parrot and no longer with us. But you, Ms. Hazel, Mr. Brett worked for me, you know, gentleman and never acted anything of Brett and he didn't do this I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, Mr. Harold, we couldn't hear your comments. We couldn't hear your comments, but we will get back to the comments on all the memorial we are doing this evening. We did them because out of respect for families and the people who have passed. So we real, we will revisit it. We will revisit the memorial resolutions and have comments made when we are back.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No, sir.
Madam President?
No. Um. Next.
Madam President?
No, sir.
Can I hear you, Harold?
Miss, we're going to move on to Q, Ms. June Shaw, retired teacher, Ms. Marion Fatida.
Ms. Ms. June Shaw. Ms. June Shaw was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-first, nineteen eighty as a teacher at East Tibeto Middle School. She also taught at Tibeto High School. Ms. Shaw retired on May twenty-third, two thousand, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. And I also want to say that Ms. June, that June was a very good author, a published author. And I also want to, uh, say that Ms. June, that June was a very good author, a published author, and I know that her family, um, and, and her friends miss her very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fertita. R., Ms. Merlin Babbin, retired school bus driver, Ms. Cheryl Thomas.
Ms. Merlin Babbin was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 27, 1962. As a school bus driver, Mr. Babbin retired on June 4th, 1987, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 25 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by the general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. So move.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. S., Ms. Joyce Akoulas, retired child nutrition technician, Dr. Mary Bro.
Ms. Joyce Jukelis was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 29th, 1966, as a child nutrition technician at Thibodeau High School. Ms. Jukelis retired on October 31st, 1984, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 18 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Thank you, Dr. Bro. P., Ms. Evelyn Wagasback, retired secretary. Mr. Barry Plazons.
Ms. Evelyn Wagasback was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 31st, 1970, as a secretary slash bookkeeper at Lockport Junior High School. She retired on May 30th, 1989, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 19 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. And, um, you, Ms. Avalia Rodri, a student, Mr. Randy Schwes.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Avli Kate Rodri was an active kindergarten student at Lockport Lower Elementary School. Avli was the daughter of Christie and Jacob Rodri. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book. I'd also like to make a comment, Madam Press.
Yes.
As I didn't know, uh, Avli personally, I did know her grandparents and worked with her great-grandfather, Ray Bouchois, who was also a radiology person at St. Anne General Hospital. I understand that Avli had a very joyful laugh and would light up a room with her laugh. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Schwes. What a great story. Let the record reflect that these resolutions be adopted by general consent, and they will be recorded on a special page in our minute book. Again, we'll revisit resolutions as far as the comments and relationships and stories of the memorials that we shared this evening, and, uh, definitely, um, have the families come when that does happen, and, um, present them with, um, what we usually do at the memorials when we read them at the board meeting in person. We'd like to thank everybody for listening and thank everybody for participating. Five tentative dates for future meetings. A, regular school board meeting, Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. B, all other meeting dates will be announced accordingly. Before we adjourn, I'd like to announce our birthdays that we've had. I know we celebrated them together over Facebook or text messages, but we had Mr. Dennis Giat, Dr. Dennis Giat, excuse me, May 29. Dr. Clyde Deplanis, May 30. Dr. Mary Bro, June 2nd. Mr. Randy Schwes, June 20. Mr. Ray Benard, June 29. And then Mr. Tyler Dupren has one coming up, July 5th, in four days. So happy birthday to all of you, um. I hope you enjoyed it. Mr. Ray, we know you enjoyed yours.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Henry Lafon.
Madam President, bu- before we adjourn, there's a couple of things I'd like to say. One, there's a good chance that this will be my last meeting. We do have an election on July 18th, and there's a possibility that, uh, you will have a new member sitting at my seat come August 5th. And I want to just thank the board, uh, for the way they accepted me and received me when I came on the board. It was thoroughly an honor working with the board, um, and with the staff. And a special thanks to, uh, Superintendent Martin and, um, Secretary Gwen Martinez. She's like an unsung hero, guys, out there. Y'all need to know that. I got to wish my mother a happy 96th birthday on TV. And, uh, I also want to congratulate the South LaFouche Department, who finished second nationally at the Van Customs Culture Competition. And maybe when we get back to real life, uh, the board can invite them to, to a meeting. I think that would be, that would be great. I want to, uh, the people of my district and the people of the parish to know it wasn't an honor to serve on the board. This is my last meeting. And, um, I want them to know that the board, the staff, the teachers, the parish, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the maintenance people, just have their children's care at their heart, and they're going to work real, they work really hard for you. And one last thing I want the district to know and the parish to know is that we may have our disagreements in this board, but I like the way the board members have treated each other with respect, not only in the meetings, but out of the meetings. I think Baton Rouge and Washington DC can learn a lot by watching how the, how you guys operate. I really do. And I want to tell you, it's been a pleasure. Uh, I may be here in August, may not. I don't know, but I wanted to be sure I got this said before, uh, I left you guys. So thank you so much for, for accepting me in your, in your group.
Thank you. Thank you.
You've been a great addition.
Thank you very much.
Going to be missed.
Yes.
Madam President?
Very, very much. Yes, Mr. Plazons?
Lafon, I'd like to tell you thank you. It's been a true pleasure to serve with you. You'll be sorely missed. You've done a great job filling in, so whoever does win the next election will have some huge shoes to fill. Like you said, I mean, you, you've been, you've been great for the board, uh, the way, the way you've treated us. And it's truly been an honor. I'd also like to point out that I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Martin and his staff for doing an excellent job with the back-to-school plan, and all the work that Gwen obviously does on a daily basis for us is a, is a true magnificent feat. So thank you, Ms. Gwen. But for all our entire staff, uh, know that we are here and working hard for you, and that, you know, that, at the postponement. Uh, it is just a postponement, so we will, we'll move forward with it one day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons. Anybody else?
Madam President.
We'll let Mr. Bernard try to go. Mr. Archer, if you okay with that?
That's fine. Can, can you hear me at all?
We can, Mr. Bernard.
Okay, uh, I just want to again, uh, echo, uh, uh, Mr. Plazons's, uh, uh, sayings concerning Henry. We will miss Henry, but, uh, just the way he talks, I think he'll miss us as well. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I hope Randy has a speedy recovery, and, uh, he's looking good. I know Randy and I will especially miss Henry on our, our, our meetings after the school board. And, uh, Mr. Martin, I, I have to tell you, I, I never thought I'd say this, but based on your, uh, podcast with Casey Corner Podcast, all you received in Facebook, believe it or not, is well over a hundred positive messages on how pleased parents are with you and your staff for making a plan that everyone can live with and which will benefit all the students in this parish. So thank you and your staff for that plan.
I will, I will pass it on to the staff. Thank you, Mr. Benard.
Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Veal and her staff and personnel for continuing to do a great job as this school year starts again. Mr. Martin and Ms. Gwen and related staff are an excellent plan that's been put together. There's a lot of work involved in that, a lot of work, so I'm sure that, uh, it's going to be well-received. Uh, the principals and teachers as well and their staff at their schools for getting the schools ready, being receptive and doing a great job with that. Uh, in addition to that, uh, happy 4th of July, and Mr. Lafon, we've been greatly missed. We wish you could come back and be with us. You brought so much to this board, and, uh, please keep in touch. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Archer. Any other comments? Mr. Dupren?
I just want to tell Mr. Lafon, it's been an honor to serve with him. I appreciate all of his advice that he's given me, um, the endless contributions that he's made to our school system here, and he can leave this position, uh, knowing that he served the parish well, and I'm truly grateful for his friendship. I also want to, uh, bring up that Mr. Martin has an anniversary coming up. It's the anniversary of him being our superintendent. He was originally elected or chosen on July 19th as our acting superintendent. I just want to tell him happy one-year anniversary. Tom flies and stay busy. And thank you for all that you've done. You, you stepped into the role, and you didn't just sit in the seat. You took it and ran with it. You didn't miss a beat, and we couldn't be more pleased as a board and as a, as a parish, I'm sure. So thank you to you and your staff for everything that you do, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Anybody else? While we, sitting here before we close, um, I kind of perused Facebook, and although I know I said to please post your questions if they weren't related to agenda items, a few things, uh, possibly that we can clear up or answer. Um, we want you to first and foremost know that many of us do know what you are going through. No, we're not sitting in those shoes, but many of us still are educators and are in the classroom, and many of us have been educators, and many of us serve in other capacities within, um, a different school board parish. So the, um, the members of this board that have been in classrooms and have worked for school systems are Ms. Tina Babbin, Ms. Marion Fertita, Dr. Mary Bro, Mr. Jarrett Martin, Mr. Al Archer, Mr. Barry Plazons, Mr. Harold Adams, Mr. Tyler Dupren, and Ms. Valerie Bouchois, and of course, Mr. Ray Benard, and myself. So a large number of, of this board has sat in the classroom and can, um, sympathize and, um, celebrate the things that, um, we are going through and the things that we have, we, we are yet to come, and how we handle those and embrace the change and, uh, the new society of today. So, um, we are here with you. We are here to stand with you. We are here to support you. Mr. Martin has conveyed that to us over and over again, that, um, the teachers are, um, a major focus, and will be supported and will be looked at, and the staff, and the principals, and the, um, and the students. And the first and foremost, safety is at the core of everything we're going to do, and supporting our teachers and students and staff through this is his number-one priority. So, um, and the board, of course, is definitely behind him on that, um, on that, uh, journey. So, um, we are here with you. Another one was Chromebooks. I know we addressed that last school board meeting, um, Mr. Martin talked about the plan. We will be providing Chromebooks to families who do need them. Every student will be provided with a Chromebook that needs it, and we have, um, we have m- made a plan for internet access if that is an issue. So, um, please, uh, parents, send your, uh, comments, send your questions to our school board office. The school board staff is waiting for your questions and comments and concerns. We'd rather alleviate any, um, a- any, you know, disconsent or, uh, concerns that you have for your children, for yourself, for curriculum. Um, we did put out a plan, but I know Mr. Martin said. Go ahead, Mr. Martin. Okay, so I thought you were talking, so based on the plan, we may need to make changes. It's, um, but right now, this is our plan. So, um, we want to, we want to assure everybody that is watching, we do have the best interest and safety of all employees and, and all children and all, and all community. So, um, please send us your questions. Anybody else have any other que- uh, anything to say?
Yes, have a happy and safe 4th of July.
Yes, sir. It's going to be a long weekend. Safe is right. If not, meet and adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be safe. Have a great evening.